Good evening. My name is Deb Cox, I'm the Council President. Since our mayor is absent tonight, I will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock.
What's the name? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll start out the meeting with Representative Prominence and Visitor.
It's a political question.
We have an agenda tonight, and that is what we're getting.
I would prefer you accept the agenda as a result.
Thank you. Call him.
Hi.
All right. Okay, this is approved. So, Prominence, Presentation of Visitor, have any presentation? Public coronation? Public comments? He's right on the line?
Nope.
But it's coming on at all?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agendas and our presentations for the new agenda.
I would prefer the consent agenda is presented.
Thank you. Uh.
Hmm. Who gets it?
Uh. Consent agenda crisis. Uh, the public areas? Public areas, any, whole business? No business? Um, so we've got some new business, refinements, uh, so Resolution One. That's implied, public service, ready to handle.
All right. Let's get this up. There you go. And some fair.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, oops.
Good evening, Councilor, Council President Fox and Councilors. My name is Cindy Rogers and I'm your Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. And I'm joined here this evening with, uh, by Travis Comfort, our Municipal Contract Administration. Our presentation this evening is a review of the essentials of the city that we provide from the city of Omsville. I will start with the statement of the nation of Oregon's solid waste franchise system. And then I will hand it off to Travis to preview current services, community events, fabric recycling, R A funding, and review where Omsville material is all due.
Oh, you might have to switch it on the side. Same there.
There you go.
All right, okay.
I don't know why I keep saying that.
In Oregon, most cities have chosen to franchise their solid waste collection. A franchise is essentially a contract and an investment franchise agreement between the municipality and a provider. The franchise agreement allows the provider to serve its customers within the city's jurisdiction. Other examples of franchises we could use are cable, public health, no electricity, and handling services. Here are the benefits of the franchise system. O R S four fifty-nine grants service and recording authority to, to the cities. There's an increase in operational efficiencies, decrease in street wear and care, and an increase in air noise pollution. We also help Omsville make their E Q mandated opportunity to recycle and handle reporting requirements. Cities have additional, have an additional source of revenue through the franchise fee. Omsville is seven percent. The franchise also provides incentives for the investments in solid waste equipment, facilities, sites, and technology by the power. Slide four explains the ten percent return on revenue target. The solid waste industry has a target of ten percent return on revenue. Out of the ten percent return on revenue, you pay taxes, and we set aside funds for reserves. In other words, the ten percent return on revenue is not a profit. And then I will end off with this and then I will come back.
Evening, Council President Cox. Omsville City Council. Um, it's a pleasure to be with you all here tonight. Um, and I'm going to go over our service tax, uh, what we do with the city and public work staff, and then, um, where all that material is being going. Um, so we have seven drivers currently serving the city of Omsville. Uh, there occurs of twelve hundred ninety-five ounces, uh, six or eight times each month. So this is pretty unique for, uh, residential services in Oregon. Uh, Omsville has an opt-out yardage recollection, so if you don't have or have the need for it, you can just opt out and it's driven under five dollars, uh, a month to add yardage. So for comparisons later on, um, we'll be bundling that together. But if you have yardage rate, the trucks are eight times a month, if you don't, six. So you can see here in, uh, likely your customer counts. So with the twenty gallon, uh, that's six percent of Omsville's residents. Uh, thirty-one percent have the thirty-five gallon, thirty-seven percent have the sixty-five gallon, and twenty-six have the ninety-five gallon. So this also includes the ninety-five gallon of recycled cars, um, and fifteen gallons of coke for, uh, glass recycling in Marion County. Marion County is, uh, the gold standard when it comes to, um, glass recycling, because you can also recycle, we use motor oil, use cooking oil, antifreeze, batteries, and paint. We like to include this graphic with a lot of our outreach these days because it gives a good visualization of like what we fit in each car. Um, currently, Omsville residents can recycle, uh, cardboard, gateware, plastic bottles, and jugs, um, considering the limited cans. This list is going to grow dramatically starting July first with the Recycling Modernization Act. So Omsville residents will be able to recycle the same things, uh, as Salem and Portland, um, and so on. They kind of standardize it across, across the state, and we'll cover more of that later. Um. And then, like I mentioned before, every other week with your recycling, you can put out, you know, a gap on antifreeze, uh, use motor oil or cooking oil. Either put those back in clear jug, mark what they are, or the original kind of container they in. So again, motor oil container works great, you can put motor oil, cooking bottles. Um, in terms of D E Q requirements, so this is a nuisance, the last one was in front of you and Cindy bringing up, uh, the last one over here brought this up. Uh, with the twenty twenty census, Omsville went over four thousand. Uh, so the Oregon recycling laws, cities have mandated, uh, recycling services that they have to perform. Uh, been working with Matt and Ron on these. Uh, Omsville was the first city to actually submit their O T R for last year, twenty twenty-four, this year. We got that done just two weeks ago. Um, so ahead of the game on that. Tonight, for your consideration, we do have, um, a funding authorization for the new recycling law. So the new recyc, the big change in July is that the producers are going to have a stake in it. So it's called an extended producer responsibility model. Um, and this is the first real milestone in getting them to help support the system. So the three key funding areas are contamination reduction, that's going to be looking in carts or cameras, or also inverse and outreach by county staff or republic staff, uh, to Omsville residents. Uh, recycling service expansion, so we did request last year with, uh, the Worsop, uh, the, um, Pro, which is responsible organization, put out, uh, to either give Omsville a depot or expand recycling collection services, which would be paid for by the end of the Pro. And then they've also agreed to help subsidize glass collection. So they're going to help, uh, Omsville residents, the two seventy-seven dollars a ton for the first year, so starting July first. Um, the glass bin collection is going to be supported by seventy-seven dollars a ton, uh, which should help a bit of that, that overall cost. Uh, that form is due March third first. Uh, but with Ron, Matt, they've got it all outlined and it's just, I think it's, you know, a bit of a. Um, a big topic we've been wanting to cover with all of our cities, uh, is the rising concern of factories. Uh, we're seeing lithium batteries embedded or coming with a lot of disposable items. When these batteries get punctured, they cause fires. Um, just a couple of months ago, Cindy was giving a tour at our Wilsonville site, which is, uh, a fire. Uh, and then every time a new visitor comes to the, the office, they have to sign in. It seems very, on that the mayor have to sign in, but it's in case, if there's an incident or we're looking for people on site, we're just very concerned about safety. Um, but this was a battery fire that was caused in a compacted load container. And we'll circle back to compacted loads, uh, were basically going in Marion County in the near future. So on this site, you can see the, um, culprits there on your right. Uh, those are the little batteries that lit, um, a whole container of garbage on fire. Um, but in terms of matter recycling, Omsville residents can, uh, recycle one quart of lockback every other week. Just, uh, make sure you take the ends of your lithium batteries and put it on top of any material you have in the glass booth, so the driver notices it, uh, and he'll pick that as what don't be the glass. Uh, Omsville Corn Fest, uh, is known for its events each year. Um, I've done it four, four years now. Um, and we get to speak with hundreds of residents, play football with the kids, um, and enjoy corn on the cob. Uh, and if they can, they just can't do that. This, uh, the city's annual cleanup has become a huge success, and we're looking to work with the county to bring a free e-waste collection event, uh, for Omsville residents. Um, and Cindy and I got to volunteer at Christmas in the park this year, and that was a great way to meet people, um, and just network, and it seemed like everybody had a great time. Uh, we were also very fortunate enough in October to, uh, join, uh, the career fair at Omsville Elementary. This is the first one they've had since the pandemic. It's been really hard to get back into schools. Um, but they're going to do this event again, and we're hoping to bring, uh, trucks here. The kids were very engaged, as engaged as I get in, like, Mount Angel High School, Silverton High School. They were just as interested in where their material goes. The kids love the trucks, so we're going to try to do that next year, this, uh, coming October. Um, safety is our number one priority, so we have supervisors doing, uh, unscheduled driver stops. So this is, uh, a transportation, they just do the driver inspection, and then the other supervisor inspects their truck. So the drivers' driver responsibility for their truck, uh, but this allows the supervisors to, uh, uh, maintain a tighter side of it. Uh, over twenty twenty-three, we hold, uh, thirteen hundred forty-two tons of garbage, two hundred ten tons of recycling, and seven hundred forty-nine tons of yardage at Omsville. And this is for just residential customers only. You can see the breakdown of the tons there by quarter and where the material. On slide seven, here we go. Um, you can see that we hold three hundred fourteen tons of garbage, two hundred, excuse me, twenty-seven tons of recycling for Omsville businesses and, uh, where that material is sold. So in both resource and re-world are in groups, they're just on the opposite sides of BI five there. So, but the transportation distance is virtually the thing. On slide eighteen, you can see our drop pops holding waves. Uh, with three hundred and seventy-six tons of material, holding just a hundred and twenty-four boxes. So very few boxes coming out of Omsville, um, and all that's back to Cindy throughout our presentation.
So I would be providing counsel with a revision of D E Q being in charge of Town Line Public Services as requesting a rate adjustment, uh, for us, because last rate adjustment was in September of twenty twenty. So on slide nineteen, uh, as you may have heard, re-world, the incinerator is no longer accepting municipal solid waste. Uh, now, Omsville is holding solid waste for Marion County, including Omsville is going to resource the material recovery facility, which is also, like Travis mentioned, also in front, but it's on the other side of the, of BI five. So you can see where they're, where they're loading out the map there. And then from there, the material is reloaded and then taken to a, um. Please note that this statement of income is with no increase. So I just want to point out that we, uh, we finished twenty twenty-three with an operating income as a percentage of revenue at point four percent. Currently, we are forecasting to end twenty twenty-four with an operating income of nearly negative nineteen thousand dollars. And we are forecasting to end twenty twenty-five with operating income of a negative forty-four thousand dollars. And again, this is with no increase and these forecasts are conservative. The table of expenses shows that twenty twenty-three, we feed the city over fifty thousand dollars in finance fees and close to the same amount in twenty twenty-four. In our industry, disposal is the largest expense. These expenses are unaccountable. In Marion County, the disposal of trash was low control, meaning that the county decides where the material goes for disposal. And like I mentioned on slide nineteen, in Marion County, the trash was going to re-roll with our cernation. Since re-roll is closed, it's now going to landfill instead. Most of the recycle goes to the material recovery facility in Brooks. Unfortunately, since two thousand eighteen, we've seen a significant increase in the cost to process recycle. And in twenty twenty-three, we saw a thirty percent increase to process yardage. So slide twenty-two shows a comparison between Omsville's new proposed rates and three nearby, nearby cities. For the sake of comparison, Omsville's rates include yardage rate, but like Travis mentioned, that that's often the topic of it. Um, but before I review the comparison, I'd like to just acknowledge that we know that rate adjustments are not easy. Um, this rate adjustment will allow us to continue to provide the level of service that businesses and residents of Omsville need and expect. And I can see that some important things can recognize. We know that, uh, nobody likes giving rate adjustments. But for comparison date, let's focus on the sixty-five gallon, uh, residential rates. So since sixty-five gallon is the most popular size, uh, that's where we might kind of focus as easiest. So as you can see, Omsville is still below other cities in the surrounding area. So Silverton is two dollars and eighty-five cents higher. Uh, St. Louis is two dollars one cent higher, and Slimy, who just had a twenty-two percent increase in February, uh, just what we go, uh, is at dollar fifteen higher. Omsville's new proposed rates are lower than other cities for almost every service. This statement of income, uh, is with the twenty-three percent increase effective March first of twenty twenty-five. So as you can see with the adjustment, we are forecasting to get within the, up the eight to twelve percent range, very close to the ten percent target at nine point nine percent. And then once we get close to the target, we should be able to only have to do increases based on inflation. Um, unless, of course, something other all happens, like disposal has a significant increase above inflation. So lastly, as a reminder, twenty twenty-one, the Senate passed S B five eighty-two, the Recycling Modernization Act, which goes into effect July of this year. Travis already mentioned that. Um, we'll be back over this year to update council on the Recycling Modernization Act. So I'd like to thank you for trying to be inclined to see some of you again. Um, I can do to be on the gas meeting and video along with me, uh, so thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
And that's, that's what the four thousand, the four thousand residents, so that's about, what are you saying? Cause I'm not going to be able to put out. That's when the mandate started, uh, now we're.
Seven four thousand, we can't backtrack.
Yeah.
If, if, if the new census came out and you fell below four thousand, yeah, that mandate would go up. We are. Well.
That's from the opportunity reasonable. So S B five eighty-two is standardizing, um, so one of the ideas with the S B five eighty-two is that, one, that what you can recycle at Omsville is the same as what you can recycle in Ashland, is the same as what you can, so that there's no, to, you know, to help confu, confusion. And the big component of what it also does is it's E V R, so it makes the producers of packaging pay into the system. So that, so that when we go to take, uh, the coming recycling for Omsville to the processing facility, there has been a charge. And so the charge will go away to zero dollars, and the processors that, that make the packaging are going to be into the system. So, you know. You, you probably have to pay for it anyway, we provide value chips, right? But, you know, it helps them to, the idea is that they'll change their packaging so that more of our packaging is the curbside recycle.
And then these are paired together, but S B five eighty-two of Recycling Modernization Act is mostly optional at the four thousand level. Like, if you didn't do anything, you would miss out on the seventy-seven dollars a ton of glass and the help with either giving you a depot or expanded recycling service. But the opportunity to recycle, you already gave you all those requirements with curbside recycling, uh, us being at the Corn Fest and doing the career fairs, and the, we do quarterly messaging on waste reduction. Um, so all of that stuff, Omsville's already, so that stuff's. You're, yeah, that, that's a, so those are two separate, like, the mandate, one is the opportunity to recycle. The S B five eighty-two is optional.
But you will see, like, an increase in what you can put in your curbside reason. Yeah.
So was there a reason why we, like, have increased the last few years instead of making it pretty solid of a sudden?
Well, I think part of it was probably COVID related, um, and, I mean, to be honest with you, um, I think that, that falls on us, we're not having the bandwidth to be able to get into asking for the adjustment, just to be perfectly honest. The intention would be for us to come in here every year or so and ask for adjustment if needed, definitely. We don't want to go, I don't want to go. I do not want to go as long without asking for an adjustment.
You guys originally had said that the last increase, if you wanted, like, three and a half percent per year, we're thinking, be fair, based on what I saw, is that every year's fault?
From twenty.
Yeah, last time, you were talking about, you guys, I wasn't on K F A. You talked about maybe your previously down a year, maybe like three point five, and kind of you accept the rate there.
Yeah, the rate of inflation.
And, and, yeah.
And I think one thing that, two things, two things that are contributing to the, you know, double digit ask for increase. One is it's been four and a half years since we were compared. And two is, as you know, as everybody does, we had inflation, inflation for a couple of years now. Now, that seems to be, uh, stabilizing, which is a good thing for everybody. But, um, so we had two things that happened there. But ideally, we would just come in and ask for, once we get to the, you know, our target, the, the target of ten percent, then it would just be inflation, you know? Or unless, you know, something crazy happens, like, disposal goes way up, and we don't have a control, any, any control, and it's about thirty percent of what makes up somebody's bill. So, um, but ideally, we would just be doing C P I increases when we are, so.
Never goes down, it goes up, I'd love to see us come in here and maybe go the opposite direction and say, hey, surprise, our costs are lower and.
Me too.
So we're looking at a significant bar, certainly, which is not well. And with that, what we're trying to do is increase as small a progress as possible. So we don't have a bigger shot. I mean, I would certainly get favor of doing, you know, ten or eleven percent this year and percent next year.
Then we, then we will get to the ten percent target. Um, so the, the twenty-three percent is what gets us to the ten percent target. If we push the plan down a road, which is an option, but it just means that we would have, uh, a bigger increase next year.
I see that, but you guys have been pushing down the road for, what, four years and have asked for it since now, it's all the same, it's about falling nuts.
It's, if you guys do an awesome job, but there's a lot of competition, you know, like your, your cable bill goes up, your dish bill goes up, the company TV. A T and T jacks around, and you, you go to T M O. So here, it's just kind of, it's been oddly, you guys are great for the city, and franchise, these capital, the franchise is going on a purpose, so it's a purpose for each property. I don't have any numbers for the city or any of the companies to know what their rates are like, but I'm sure they will provide a service here. If you got a huge, huge nation flying, you don't have to.
We've, uh, we've done, we've done some analysis of some of the other garbage providers, and, uh, the, the proposed rates are, are on par, if not a little less than what I've been able to see by other providers. And some of it depends on the service area too, because obviously there's a economy of scale that occurs. But even in the city of Salem, I've looked at some of the providers that are providing to a large population area, and they're fairly close to the, these rates and providing service to a lot harder folks, which should give you a little bit of provider savings. So I think we've, in comparable to some of the other communities, maybe we've just got a good deal for a few years.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, that is the upside, but the downside is that it's a big asset. One of the downsides is that there wasn't an increase for that hall, uh, which were times when these were doing that for the biggest store and the mall. So I, I, I believe that it is, um, a pay point for sure. I don't want to, um, I want to make sure we acknowledge that. So we, we've had this, and we had this in some of any.
And you guys did a fun job, right?
I know, yeah, and the, yeah, the increase, and there was some talk about doing what they're talking about, but they, they actually decided it was better for their constituents to, um, rip the banding off the sort of seat instead of doing any of the reinforcement, or whatever, doing under increase. So, um, you know, two bigger increases, just one, they won, um, and that's what they opted to do. So we know that, that happened in Slimy, that happened in Silverton, so, um, and again, you know, I do apologize, I wish you would have been here earlier, to be honest with you, but, um, you know, this is kind of where we're at right now, and, and I do hope that you do get that with your provided, you know, garbage service.
Yes, definitely. Definitely.
What's your projections for next, if we fail that pattern?
Well, we're not forecasting any increase to happen from this year, for twenty twenty-five. I don't know about twenty twenty-six, um, but I think it's kind of dependent on disposal. You know, with the incinerator closing, there's some little end zones there right now. Um, Marion County, the trundles of material, as they, you know, where the trash goes. So the incinerator closed right now, it's going to their facility, reloaded and going to, uh, the landfill. What they decide to do after that, I'm not really sure, but, um, it does look like inflation is starting to self-stabilize. So those are all dead in Peter's thoughts.
How long is a franchise renewal, is three years, five years, is all about that?
Which one's that?
The, you guys renew your franchise renewal, it was in this package.
Yeah.
I think it renews automatically.
So we agree with the game three, we just still leave the rate for seven.
I would have shifted maybe the cost, you know, the wages, and then the.
So the last package, because you guys are going to be this in January, the last package, you were on eighteen percent, but that because the numbers were being.
Yeah, but there was a, there was a save, yeah.
It's, it's a rolling franchise renewal. Yeah.
Maybe it's locked in the rate.
Well, the rates are not part of the franchise.
Yeah.
Right, and you.
And change. Yeah, I wish you could do that, you know, that would be great if we could, but as long as our, our costs continue to go up, you know, um, then it doesn't, you know.
Did you guys have, on the last time you did the increase, you had your projections for twenty-two and twenty-three every one year. And so you had projected your revenue to be five hundred eighty-eight thousand, but it shows on this graph, and now you're at seven hundred twenty. So there's a little differences in the numbers too, not that makes a difference, but almost two hundred thousand. Uh.
Yeah.
From your projection, but, well, projection is just a.
Yeah.
Uh.
So I mean, I'm definitely a new stand in the even for it.
Yeah.
Not bigger.
You know, this is even funny, I did.
You know, yeah, it's not.
This doesn't, I guess, you're.
Yeah, that is with the, the twenty position, it appears to nine point, for four times, it is one, it's a nine point. Yeah, that is with the, the twenty position appears to nine point, for a four pound, you can get to nine point. So it's still, you know, right in that target, you're in.
You don't have a barrier to, to up about, maybe because you've been, uh, talking on your, I think about.
I think we do need to keep in mind, they have been operating in a lot here, and they do need to make that up.
And I agree.
Not fair for us to get savings and then with the knives, be able to make a big profit.
So.
Questions I disagree with the increase and I agree with you.
I, uh, I did have a conversation with the mayor in, uh, she, uh, uh, obviously, nobody wants to be part of an increase, but in today's um, world, we have to look at those things, costs are going up, but, um, so, uh, her concern was about notice, uh, when you notice the public to make sure that they had the, uh, at least some time to prepare. Uh, we put March first effective, but we'd like, uh, she would request that you give at least a thirty day notice in your billing cycle. And then the second thing is, is we want to make sure that it was presented, um, if councils processing a requested rate from Republic Service, so we just want the notice to say you're requesting the rate increase and, uh, council reviewed your fees and, and, and agreed to the increase, not necessarily we council raised the rates. And that was really, uh, the two comments she asked me to make tonight.
Yeah.
Those are about messaging.
I think what we could do is share, uh, the language that we did for our supplement and, uh, and it basically just said that there was going to be an increase to the budgetary cost, so it was just explaining.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we can try it out, yeah.
People are interested in everything.
Unfortunately, it is actually making up.
Any more questions?
That's a chance, sorry, I'm sorry, chance of that, so, um, let me talk to Ron about this, about going to the, just to, to your point, um, Council President Cox about the making sure that we're having every month, every year, uh, about doing the CPI model of what we did with state where it's just, it's kind of a turnkey, it just happens automatically. There's brand moves that are, are real on there, so it says something like, but I don't want to be memorized, but it says something like, as long as it doesn't go above a certain percentage and stays within, um, a certain range that, you know, CPI, so it's just a consumer price index, and so as long as we stay within that certain range that we can uh, do that every year without, you know.
Yeah, we're not proposing that tonight, uh, we're just proposing to do the rate adjustment for now, and then we're going to look further into that. Um, there's some concern that we might have to relook at our franchise language to be able to do that, and so we're researching that right now.
Something to speak about.
No.
I move your resolution zero one H twenty five, a resolution of the city of Almsville replacing resolution thirteen dash twenty to a Mars exhibit A of ordinance and review, a setting collection piece for Zanyam Sanitary during the citizens of Republic Services in Marion County, in connection with the explosive contract agreement between the city of Almsville and Zanyam Sanitary Services.
All up here.
Hi.
All vote. I, uh, okay, next up, we have the deal agreement.
Uh, so Mayor Council of.
Brian May is my supervisor. I don't think that will change the way I vote or anything, but I do need to just throw that in your Brian's.
I don't know who Brian is, but.
He's the manager of Public Works for Marion County. So he's overall solid base, um, and he has proposed, we, there's no agreement yet, to do some of the contamination reduction for Almsville. So there's very minimal requirements that the city would have to meet, but the counties said they would like to do that, so they're designated in there and then we're designated in there for the actual looking over the lids and monitoring the contamination of the car. But yeah, that's why Brian is listed on there, is because he's the formal representative, representative for Marion County. Same with your.
That's each truck when it dumps it, they watch the cameras if they're in the truck.
So we do have cameras, yeah, and so this would also, like, we don't have no residential trucks here, so this would, the Pro, producer's own coordination, would be putting in money to Almsville, Marion County to equip trucks to monitor that stuff. And now that they're having to cover the disposal, they want to make sure the contamination isn't worse. So there'll be oops tagging, hey, you know, next time, don't put this in there, the next one will be like, well, we're going to come back next time and just take that out, right? And then eventually, you know, if you can't clean it up, you'll either lose service or pay a penalty. Uh, but that's again, because they're going to now be covering that disposal cost.
And, uh, councillor Wick, I, uh, it doesn't seem like you have a direct benefit in voting, but you're welcome to abstain if you're uncomfortable. I, uh, to, before you, with this action is a local government funding authorization forum. This doesn't cost the city, uh, any money, but what it does is it allows us to authorize Republic Service to apply for some of these grant funds for the recycling program that are specific to the recycling program that are available through, uh, DEQ. And, um, we could apply for them directly, but it makes no sense, we're not, we've contracted with Republic Service to, to manage that recycling program that's mandated under uh, state law, and so, um, tonight, we're just asking for you to uh, authorize us to sign this funding, um, agreement form. Happy to answer a question. Yeah. And it doesn't cost us anything if what they apply for, what they're able to get, is what they'll incorporate in the program.
And, and it's fully transparent, so let's just say that the easiest thing is the seventy seven dollars per ton for the loss, right? So if they, you know, we'll report how many times we've been done, so Almsville and then they'll, they'll kind of check with the, with the, with the you know, the cost, yeah, uh, so, at least, and then they'll, you'll get, the city will get a report saying that a check was issued for X amount of dollars. So it's totally transparent, you know exactly what we've been paid, what it was for, what it was, and so it just basically makes it so that you don't have to do the administrative part of the issuing a check to ask for that, for that.
So the responsibility of following regulations and rules, that comes to you as a part of the cost.
So there isn't any further cost funding, but for that contamination reduction, the city of Almsville is going to, so DEQ by the end of this month is supposed to be releasing the three bullet points, just like Ron and Matt and I do for waste reduction and recycling currently for the opportunity to recycle. It'll be check this number of carts or oops tag this many residents or this many in-person outreach. So like, you have to, you have to start tracking how many customers you're having face-to-face interacting, because it goes much further than the mailer or putting it on your bill, um, and so again, this, it's a rolling implementation, but the thought is, is really transforming the, the recycling system and the producers have skin in the game, but also communities making enforcement. Because a lot of times, we'll get a call, we'll back out contamination charges, so that practice will go well here.
That's part of the reason that the county wants to do some of it is because they want that messaging to be consistent with the county. We have that a hundred percent confirmation that they're, what, what part they're going to do, so.
And that's just for the contamination reduction, the Pro, which in this case is Circular Action Alliance, they're going to be responsible for the statewide campaign. So they're going to be the ones responsible for getting every Almsville resident to understand what they can now add in their cart starting July first, and then like what depot options or, uh, hard recycle item options they have as well. Because beyond just your new, uh, curbside recycling, they're supposed to be making it convenient for residents of Almsville to deal with propane canisters, uh, plastic film and polystyrene, so these things that we use a lot camping or shipping stuff, uh, to actually be processed and recycled, so, um, that's, that's the minimum requirement part, but the last is because Almsville doesn't have to collect last starting July first. So CA is willing to pay you seventy seven dollars a ton to keep the program going. And out, like, other counties don't have the antifreeze, the motor oil, the cooking oil, uh, and the batteries or paint in there as well. So it's more than just last in your, in your tank.
And for us, it just makes sense that Republic Service manages that, um, uh, it doesn't mean the city isn't ultimately responsible for the program, but honestly, uh, we, I don't, we wouldn't be able to manage it within our current, uh, resources.
And Matt, Ron review everything we do every year, they sign off on, so.
We review it.
Yeah, they review everything we do.
Any questions?
I move your proof of DEQ local government funding authorization allowing Republic Services of Marion County to receive compensation directly from DEQ for authorized activities as presented by staff.
Very good. Oh, Mayor? Okay, so next we have the mayor's government agreement, drop off, maintenance or drop off?
Yeah, this is a fairly, uh, straightforward agreement inter-local, it's, it's in your, uh, the agreement is in your packet. It basically, uh, during the COVID period, uh, there was a grant uh, to, uh, pay for, uh, drop boxes, exterior drop boxes in a lot of the, the smaller cities. And, um, uh, those were all installed, um, we never thought to execute because of everything that was going on in inter-local that determined what was our responsibility and what was their responsibility. And somewhere along the line, someone at Marion County said, hey, we probably should have an agreement that says what's our responsibility, what's your responsibility? And it's outlined, it's very straightforward, we're, we're just responsible to, uh, you know, allow the box to sit on our property, um, and that basically is all we're responsible for, they're responsible for all the maintenance and upkeep and they own the box, and the agreement just memorializes that, we have no liability to Marion County, they have no liability to us. Uh, fairly straightforward user agreement. They're, not with this action, there is an effort underway to do, um, some sort of statewide, uh, video surveillance of drop boxes because of security concerns, that probably if that, uh, grows and becomes viable, that would be something that we'd come back to council and either have an amended agreement or another agreement on how that would work, but, uh, they've been discussing that with cities. This is, this is just real straightforward, the box is on our property, Marion County owns it, we just allow it to, to stay there.
Any other question?
This is the end of our agreement, the city of Almsville established certain provisions for maintenance and operation of the Marion County valid drop boxes presented by the staff.
There you go. Oh, Mayor? Uh, so the city's mission report is next.
Yeah, I just have a couple of small items, uh, uh, just note both the, uh, police and public works. Um, uh, reports are in your, your packet, we've been doing, uh, a number of small upgrades around the community, we redid the fountain out of, uh, Porter Boone Park. Um, the police report, other than hosting our first, uh, or upcoming CPR first aid class uh, that we're trying to do, uh, offer to the community, one of our officers became a CPR instructor. And so we've got a program that we're out, uh, promoting to do that right now. Um, a reminder to council that we have our, uh, town hall scheduled for February eighteenth at five thirty in the community center. You don't have to come, but you're all welcome to come, we didn't notice it, uh, so you could attend. Um, and the presentation that we have is fairly short, it's really intended to just provide some basic background and then have a discussion with any members that attend and try to answer any questions that they may have. Um, uh, we have two options that I have included in the presentation, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned those because um, we were talking about rate increases. Our recommended option is, is a one-time rate adjustment, uh, because that's the least expensive overall cost to the community. Um, we have the two-year option, which we'll talk about to the public, and if they have a preference and they're able to voice that, it might help provide some guidance. But we're not planning a multi-year, uh, nor could we. Um, council was presented that option a few years ago and, um, just with concerns of, you know, nothing's occurred, the timing of everything was always bad. We had COVID, and then, you know, people were out of work, um, the costs of things were increased. Um, and it just never was a good time, but at this moment in time, we're either looking at a one-year option or a two-year option, which increases the overall rate by ten percent. Um, and so, uh, those are, those are going to be the options. Um, see, uh, do you want me to mention those two things, the training and the dinner?
Yeah.
Yep, so the Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Government is hosting their annual dinner, I believe it's March fifth. Um, we haven't really attended, uh, much lately, usually it's just myself and, um, that's, that's been going, but it used to be a tradition um, where we would go, the council would go. If, if any of you would like to go, um, the city would pay for, uh, tickets for you and your spouse, I believe that's the, the one dinner we've always paid for, uh, you and your plus one. Um, it's not a crazy expensive meal and it's more of a awards to accomplishments throughout, um, the year for the council governments. But if you'd like to go, it is in Salem and we can get you tickets, just let us know.
What's it called again?
It's the Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Governments and it's their annual awards dinner.
It's March fifth.
It's March fifth, and just think.
To do that with the other cities.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's, they have a high in purpose naming increase and that's when we have to sit down later and then they do the awards.
If, if those of you who attended the League of Oregon Cities, oh, Friday night awards, it's very similar.
That's at the convention center now down, Carl?
Heritage.
Heritage Center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll forward you an email, but just get with us and we'll get the tickets for you, if you.
The town hall's five thirty, excuse me, so.
Next Tuesday at five thirty, yeah. Um, and then the, uh, there is a mandatory ethics training that was implemented through state law two years ago.
Yes, but not implemented until this year.
This year it becomes effective. Uh, and there are some training opportunities and we'll send you out an, an email for what those, those are, but, uh, they, they are required, uh, that elected officials, uh, attend those, and so um, we'll give you the information, it's, it's, you know, it's your responsibility, just like it is to file your uh, statement of economic interest, uh, to attend those. If you don't attend those, I'm guessing somebody from the, uh, commission will, will contact you directly, so you should plan on trying to get to one. Um, I haven't been to one, I don't know what all they present, but we just wanted to make sure that you knew it is now a required, uh, uh, participation. And I think it's just once per elected term.
Yes.
Yeah, so each time you get elected. Um, that's all, that's all I have, this is as usual, we've got a lot going on, uh, I've got, um, an all-day training on the eighteenth, so I'm gonna get back here just in time to do the presentation for the town hall. Um, and then uh, I think the third of March through the fifth of March, um, I have a uh, OGFLOA conference that I'm going to, and then I will be on vacation from the eleventh of March to the twenty-seventh of March. So just a little bit about my schedule, of course, you're always welcome to call me or text me or email me because you know, I sometimes welcome that when I'm on vacation. And then if you have any questions, um, uh, there is correspondence in your packet. Um, just saying that we have completed our Public Works uh, project, we've met all the criteria uh, outlined by the state to do that. So that's basically a closeout of that, and if you have any questions on the happy day, keep them answered.
You know, we're gonna give us a little bit on Comcast, if it was on something like.
Yeah, that's probably gonna go uh, to an executive session uh, because we're still negotiating, and I'm thinking it will be at the next council meeting, we'll do a short executive session. And I will give you an update, there has been, you know, some posts on social media uh, about that and speculation uh, about why or why not they're not opening their franchise in Almsville. And regardless of the speculation, as we've explained to you, under federal law, um, uh, we can't ask for uh, a lot of things. And uh, and all we do is, under our council adopted policies, which is to treat each business equally, uh, uh, they've only been asked to match what existing franchise require, franchise requirements are, so we're not, we, we didn't ask Comcast for anything extra uh, in the franchise. So um, so that's where that is, whether or not they decide to move forward with it is merely up to them, but what we can't do is give them a more competitive advantage um, under the law, because that would violate the federal law, what we'd have to do to give them more favorable terms would be to go back and offer those favorable terms to other people, which would cost the community money, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that.
I will mention that when simply did in our neighborhood, they were mentioning two neighbors that Comcast will be here in two years unless.
They may, they may not, we'll, we'll see.
I'm telling you though, that it is maybe not for.
Yeah.
Like it doesn't deal. I've had several of their nasty, they said, it's under negotiation.
Yeah.
Can't say more than that.
Yeah, and and I understand it's nice to have a second choice, um, and to be honest with you, I don't know where some of the other providers fall in uh, cost range, but um, you know, those services are not inexpensive, they're yeah, they're
Money bank.
They're, they're up there pretty good, so, and I did see some of the comments of people that did have it in other places, where we're talking about, you know, would be higher than what. So some people will choose to do that if they come to the community, but I'm guessing not everybody.
It'll definitely be a key injury, huh?
Yeah. And I did respond to the public posts, uh, just so that uh, rather than let speculation run wild.
I just don't know what we need.
Yeah.
They are. Do you have anything for Eric Councilor, sir?
If I have any meetings, we can put this in the hollow, but it's probably something.
Anything in the order?
I just want to mention last time, I have these two shortages in the league that I was given, but excellent information to the community, and I appreciate that you guys took the time to do that, because takes a lot of thought to do this, out of all the stuff that we're doing, so thank you.
Yeah, and I will say, even during like National Night Out, we went out into neighborhoods and there were several block parties, and we just gave kind of a pop-up presentation on um, the wastewater project and we were, what was that? At that moment, so I, you know, I, there's a fair number of people that have gotten that information, I'm guessing not everybody has been paying attention to it, but we, we have been doing this for a couple of years now in prepping and priming uh, our community for the project and the background as to why, um, as well as answering just other questions, and I have noticed that some of those folks that we talked to at those different events have been providing some of that information, so there, there are those answers that are uh, being presented from multiple sources.
Anything else for this word? You mentioned for office, can you, can you go or anything else for the, we can start back. So one thing.
Okay.
Okay, it's looking out. I'm going.